Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint: safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Aw, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
Grand Forks. On Saturday, August 17th, feel the thrill of WWE Live with the Universal Champion.
The Age of Rollins is here!
And we are going to burn it down!
CSAT Rollins collides with Barrington for the Universal Championship, plus Braun Sterling battles Bobby Lashley one-on-one. It's WWE Live at Grand Forks on Saturday, August 17th. Tickets are available.
Under Item 1, roll call, and welcome. Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Weber.
Maak.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Here.
Sandy. Dean. We have a corn.
Thank you. And Mr. Weber, are you on the phone?
I'm here.
I think I heard him, so... So, I believe...
Weber is here.
...a few more people here than normal, and probably to speak to an item. So if you are here to speak to an item other than 213...
Hey Brett.
Please let Mr. Heidner know so we can be sure we don't miss you on that item. If you are here for Item 213, if you would fill out a speaker card, they're in the back. And then when you come up to the microphone, if you'll introduce your name and address and drop the speaker card in the tray, that would be helpful so they can enter everything into the meeting minutes. Moving on to discussion items. Item 2.1, resolution authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds on behalf of Altru Health Systems. Ms. Harson.
Thank you. Councilmember Maak, members of the committee. The item you have before you is a resolution authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds on behalf of Altru Health Systems. As the staff report summarizes, state statute allows the city to issue revenue bonds for Altru, and we have done this in the past. This bond will be issued to refinance existing bonds as they're looking at interest savings. If there are any costs involved from the city's part, that would be reimbursed by Altru, and we would take no liability on as the city for this debt. We are asking of you tonight to recommend to the full council approval of the attached resolution authorizing the issuance of these bonds. If you have any questions, I can answer those, or Sarah is here also representing Altru.
Thank you. Council discussion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
The next series of items will be Mr. Swanson, and I think we can take Items 2.2 through 211 all together. Item 2.2, ordinance amending Section 8-0825 relating to impounding of certain vehicles, removal and storage fees. Item 2.3, ordinance amending Section 9-0127 relating to trespassing on private property. 2.4, ordinance amending Section 8-0311 relating to failure to report an accident. 2.5, ordinance amending Section 9-0503 relating to penalties for specific offenses. 2.6, ordinance amending Section 8-0516 relating to passing and overtaking of vehicles. Item 2.7, ordinance amending Section 21-0205 relating to class descriptions and requirements. 2.8, ordinance amending Section 8-1503 relating to penalties for specific offenses. 2.9, ordinance amending Section 9-0220 relating to possession of marijuana. 2.10, ordinance amending Section 9-0108 relating to possession or ingestion of marijuana. And Item 2.11, ordinance amending Section 8-0202 relating to driving under the influence of controlled substances. Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Chair and members of committee. This is very often I get to monopolize the agenda, so I thought I'd take full advantage of it. It's a nice meeting, so after about two hours of discussion, I should be done with my items. Not really. Most of the ordinances in front of you are ordinances addressing changes in state legislation through the last session, although there are a couple that are not. I also have had the opportunity to address these matters with the city prosecutor, and there are a couple of minor changes in the ordinances that you have. But very quickly, the first one dealing with impounding of certain vehicles, that is a request from the police department to add parking in alleys and so forth where vehicles are parked and are blocking traffic. That is a change, it is not related to legislation. The ordinance on trespassing on private property is not related to current legislation, it is a change requested by the police department. State law currently allows an exemption for law enforcement officers in the official capacity to not be governed by a private trespass ordinance. We are incorporating that provision of state law in our code that had not been incorporated previously. The ordinance relating to failure to report accidents, currently state law and our city code says if you have an accident with damage of $1,000 or more, you must report it. State law has changed that $1,000 limit to $4,000. We are making that change. And there is one correction in the ordinance that was passed out in a packet where I had omitted changing $1,000 to $4,000, so the new ordinance will change that as well. The ordinance 90503 relating to penalties for specified offenses, we are adding specific provisions in there for alcohol evaluation in accordance with new state legislation. We are changing the penalties to be in accord with new legislation. Otherwise, there is no other need for that amendment, and I'll address it also later. There's another ordinance that deals with fees. But generally speaking, there was some change in the legislation this last year that allows cities to increase their fees for certain offenses. These ordinances include the higher fee level. I just went ahead and incorporated that authority to increase the fees as allowed by the legislature. The ordinance 80516 relating to passing and overtaking vehicles is technically a correction-type ordinance. We had the wrong word. We had overtaken instead of overtaking. We corrected that. The ordinance on 210205 deals with winery on and off-sale licenses. The word "sell" was omitted. Again, we're making that technical correction in that ordinance. Section 81503, penalties for specified offenses. This one has penalties for a large number of offenses that are changing. They incorporate both state law changes as well as our authority to increase the fines. There is a question, a policy question there. The way this is written reflects what was previously written and goes to the higher fee. If you don't want to go to that higher fee as a mandatory fee, we could provide up to that, excuse me, up to that fee as opposed to a specified. I have drafted it, so it's a specified fine as opposed to up to that fine. The last, or excuse me, the next two ordinances, 90220 and 90108, relate to marijuana. We have incorporated the exemptions that if you are in possession of medical marijuana or marijuana that's provided for under state law under medical marijuana provisions. So those are the changes in those two ordinances. And the last one, driving under influence. There have been a number of changes over the last three or four years from US Supreme Court decision, there's also been changes in legislation. There was a fairly significant bill this year that incorporated all of those law changes under DUIs. We have now incorporated the changes for DUIs that match our code with state law. With those very brief explanations, I stand for any questions you may have on any of them. I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, if there are no questions, my recommendation is that the committee pass a motion to introduce and give preliminary approval to each of these ordinances.
Any discussion from council?
I would make a motion for preliminary approval of all of the ordinances as proposed.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any other council discussion? Hearing none? We're still working through the first part of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes. Either Item 2.9 or 2.10?
What?
The ordinance relating to possession of marijuana is 2.9.
Are we discussing that presently?
Yep, we're taking all of them together. So if you had anything on 2.9 or 2.10 is relating possession or ingestion.
Yes, I had a little bit for both 2.9 and 2.10.
Would you give us your name and address just for the record?
My name is David Owen. I live at 750 South 43rd Street, apartment number 1021A. It's also called The Verge Apartments. It's in Grand Forks. So here's my commentary. As we can see over the past couple of elections, we see a clear move towards legalization, and we see that the city of Grand Forks specifically voted in favor of legalization by a simple, by a fair majority. As a result, we've also seen movement in the legislature to push for partial decriminalization. It's clear that by both the will of the city of Grand Forks and by the will of our representatives at the state legislature, they were pushing for a decriminalization bill which was not quite achieved. What that means is it puts the city in a little bit of an awkward position, so what can we do to kind of represent the city and deal with the will of our people in the city while also respecting state law? I would like to suggest that we adopt an ordinance as well in addition to this that moves enforcement of marijuana ingestion and marijuana possession to the lowest possible priority for law enforcement, both given the precedent of the fact that the city voted in favor of full legalization and given the precedent that our representatives, including Republicans and Democrats from 42 and the surrounding districts which encompass the city of Grand Forks, voted for a complete decriminalization bill. It's in my opinion that's in the best interest of the city, therefore, to follow the will of the people as much as possible in accordance with the law. And while we cannot directly defy the state law, this is the best way to protect our citizens and represent what they voted for. So that's a recommendation that I would suggest. I would also like us to look at what ingestion really means and how it's problematic in regards to enforcement. So ingestion itself is simply the consumption of marijuana, so there needs to be some form of carve-out for people who live in a household with medical marijuana for a very simple reason. When they typically determine ingestion, they do it through a percentage-based THC test. Usually, these are good in the hair for 30 days, in blood they're good for, call it two to four days. Now let's pretend you're visiting your grandfather, who has a medical marijuana card, and you happen to be in the same room as him when he smokes marijuana. It's possible, however unlikely, that you will have some form of THC in your system, and therefore you could be popped for an, you could be arrested for an ingestion charge and the test would show positive. As a result, I think there should be an affirmative defense portion which allows for argument that if you're in frequent and close proximity to an individual who is using medical marijuana, that that be an acceptable defense at the city level. That's basically what I wanted to cover in regards to marijuana ordinances. I think overall, we've got to step in the right direction, but there's one last thing that we could look at, and this specifically pertains to the medical law, and that is it is currently legal to discriminate against someone who is seeking alternative care through medical marijuana by means of employment. What does that mean? That means that even if you have a legitimate medical card in the city of Grand Forks, you can be terminated for using medicine designed to treat a very potentially lethal or serious condition. So I think that it would be pertinent that city council look into some form of protection for legitimate medical patients who are trying to continue to have employment so that they can have their health insurance to treat their condition while also using the medicine that they believe is best for them during that period. Basically all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, I...
Well, without debating the merits of his comments, which I will not, I can simply tell you, you do not have the authority to do any of those changes without state legislation leading the way, even as a home rural city. Your ordinances must be consistent with state law.
So in terms of many of those suggestions, we would not have the authority to do that?
Correct. And the fact that the local legislators may have voted in favor, the majority of the legislators did not adopt some of the changes that the gentleman spoke of, and as a city, you do not have the authority to implement those.
I don't believe employment is within city jurisdiction to make those types of changes. Okay.
The whole issue behind marijuana is still a minefield. It is still a controlled substance under federal law. It is still a controlled substance under state law. While the legislature made some steps or inroads into decriminalizing and changing the penalties for certain marijuana-related offenses, and we have further allowed medical marijuana, those fields are all what's called occupied by the state, meaning that the city, even if you had specific home rural authority to change it, have been preempted by the adoption of the state legislation. So to accommodate or to accomplish the goals that this gentleman spoke of, it really would require state legislation.
Can I ask one quick question, sir? As we've argued recently, I don't know the rules, so is it possible?
If you'll come up... Well, we can do a brief question.
So, my one question is, I understand that some of the things I suggested may not be possible, and you have better expertise than I do. The question is, is city council allowed to set law enforcement priorities such that marijuana would be the least prioritized offense enforceable under police law? I know cities such as Denver have done that.
Not, not in violation of state law. If the state law would grant the authority for the city to establish a priority of enforcement, then the city could.
Okay.
But by ordinance, the city council could not do that.
Okay, thank you.
And just so we're clear, other states will have different laws as to what localities can or cannot do. North Dakota in this area has not found fit to give local authorities discretion to make rules other than what the state has adopted.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 212, noisy party ordinance discussion. This was tabled from June 10th, 2019, committee as a whole. Mr. Weigel, did you have an update?
I would just ask that we table again until a later time.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Motion to table can't allow for discussion, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item 213, resolution of the Grand Forks City Council annually recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Mr. Phelan, did you want to introduce for staff?
I can introduce this. I met along with a few others from city staff, met with councilmember Maak, or councilmember Doppler, sorry, councilmember Maak, and with councilmember Doppler and a group of citizens, concerned citizens regarding this particular resolution. We had a really good conversation about a week ago today, and that's why this is in front of you today. There's a group that's led that. We did have a good conversation in the meeting. I've heard lots of positive feedback, much like we've seen with the Native American flags that we have in front of our council dais regarding this initiative. The only feedback that I have received is there are references in the resolution regarding Christopher Columbus. And can we, can we move forward the resolution without reference that? And councilmember Doppler and I in the group talked about that, but I think they thought that it's really important to have the full dialogue regarding this issue, is that we need to speak about why this is in front of us and things that have happened in history. So that's why it's contained what it is. We did discuss many of these different aspects, and obviously with the interest in the group here in our council chambers, that's kind of the spirit of what it is, and I think councilmember Doppler wanted a full and engaged conversation, and I think generally it's been a positive review, and I'm just highlighting some of the things that have come to me about why it reads the way that it reads. So with that, I hand it over to our councilmember Doppler.
I would like to start, to begin today by acknowledging that we are meeting on the traditional and ancestral land that has been inhabited by the Mandan, Hadatsa, Irikura, Yanktonia, Sisseton, Wapitun, Hunkpapa, Dakota Lakota, Pembina, Chipewa, Anishinaabe, Cree, and Miti. We're grateful for the opportunity to meet here, and we thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this ancestral land and recognize and deeply appreciate the historic connection to this place. So, Mr. Phelan already introduced our resolution for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I have the pleasure of bringing it up again to you. The idea of replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day was born in 1977 at a UN-sponsored conference in Geneva, Switzerland, on discrimination against indigenous populations in the Americas. Indigenous Peoples' Day is a holiday celebrated in many US cities to honor and acknowledge the past and continuous presence of Native people in the Americas. At least 122 cities and municipalities, three counties, two school districts, nine colleges and universities, and seven states have also chosen to proclaim this day to date. This conversation that we're having today isn't to rewrite history, but rather it's to write it by acknowledging the truth of Christopher Columbus's legacy and how Columbus Day came to be. I think it's important to have historical context. It is a little bit dry for some of you that are maybe not history buffs, but I do think it's important to be on the same page of what we're talking about in order to move this conversation forward. So if you'll bear with me. Columbus Day came to be because an estimated 4 million Italians immigrated to the United States from 1880 to 1920. Many of them were farmers and laborers fleeing from poverty. In America, they encountered religious discrimination, difficult working conditions, and a culture of anti-Italianism that viewed them as inferior and associated them with organized crime. In 1891, 11 Italians were lynched in New Orleans by a mob that held them responsible for the death of a police official. At the end of the 1800s, Italians began to link themselves more with Columbus. Italian-American businessmen and newspaper owner Generalso Pope was among those who worked to get Columbus Day recognized as a federal holiday in 1937. It was one of the things that would allow them to become Americans symbolically, to have an official American holiday and to emphasize the idea that Columbus was a great discoverer who helped find the America that we know today. It is ironic then that Christopher Columbus did not discover the Americas, nor was he even the first European to visit the New World. In fact, Viking explorers had sailed to Greenland and Newfoundland in the 11th century prior to Columbus. Christopher Columbus paved the way for European colonization by opening trade routes from the Americas to Europe. It is those trade routes, however, that exploited our indigenous populations by enslaving them as well as providing a pathway for African slavery to take root in America's history, in addition to other crimes against humanity. So while we may have been taught Columbus was a daring and path-breaking explorer who transformed the New World, it is even more important to understand all of Columbus's transforming impacts, which unleashed changes that would eventually devastate the Native populations he and his fellow explorers encountered. This resolution was crafted and is brought forth in collaboration with our indigenous community, some of whom are in this room tonight, and I thank you for coming. This resolution is not simply changed for changes' sake, but rather a significant step in building a stronger relationship with our indigenous community. Conversations which call into light the negative actions of historical heroes will never be easy, and it's not comfortable, but it is necessary to continue self-reflection as a community and as a society when the facts are present so that we can continually be better. Affirming the Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution as a city in accordance with the Welcoming Community Roadmap Initiative and the Diversity and Inclusion Resolution continues to affirm Grand Forks's commitment to being a welcoming, vibrant destination city, and it is an actionable step that truly would make North Dakota legendary. And so I would like to invite anyone who has filled out their comment cards and would like to share or make their remarks to come up to the mic.
If people will, just come forward and leave your comment card behind so we have it for the minutes when you go to print those up. And if you will, just introduce yourself and speak.
Hello, my name is Courtney Davis-Suvanasok, and I am a resident of Grand Forks, North Dakota, and I am an enrolled member of Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa. If you will bear with me, I do have a written statement from the Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa chairman, Jamie Azure, and I would like to read that to you in the crowd if, if okay. Grand Forks City Council. Bonjour. Ogumah. Ogumah. Tikgasa. Kanu. Minna. Gejigan. Nogam. Hello, my name is Spirit, hello, my spirit name is Spotted Eagle Jamie Azure. Today is a good day. I want to thank you for taking time out of your day to read this letter. I completely understand the importance of time with elected officials. I'd also like to thank and commend you all for accepting public comments and taking the initiative of bringing to light an issue across Native nations, including the five tribes of North Dakota. We all know the saying, the old saying, the winners wrote the history books. Unfortunately, that has been the case with the history of this nation's first people. The hard truth is... The hard truth is that the landing of Columbus on this continent started the events that almost destroyed a people and a culture. While I understand the significance of why Columbus Day was established, I also need to point out that the Native nation's true history was scrubbed clean from history books for 100 years. Now in the year 2019, information is a click away in this digital age of data. I highly recommend searching a quick documentary called The Canary Effect to get a glimpse of the atrocities a proud people endured only to survive and flourish to this very day. Tribes in the state of North Dakota have made many great strides of partnership and respect these last two to three years, and the momentum keeps rolling forward. This act of officially changing Columbus Day into Indigenous Peoples' Day is not only a symbolic, a major symbolic decision that coincides with our trending partnerships of respect, but a true statement that a people's fight from the decimation is to be honored. As a ogumah, a chief chairman of the great Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa Nation, I implore you to recognize October 14th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I speak on behalf of our 34,000 members, along with a large segment attending UND and in living in and around the Grand Forks metro. I have faith that the esteemed city council will make the correct choice, and again, I thank you for your time and willingness to bring this to light. Ogumah, kitagasi kenu. I think I got it right that second time. Jamie Azure. And this is my own personal statement, so bear with me. In 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue, and on the second Monday in October, we observed a federal holiday dedicated to a man who was said to have discovered the Americas. What we intrinsically know is that the Americas were already inhabited by hundreds of millions of people. His quest to find fame and fortune was one major catalyst to create generations of trauma through the genocidal acts committed to the Indigenous communities of the Americas. Bonjour, anin. Good evening, City Council. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Courtney Davis-Suvanasok, and I am an enrolled member of the Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa. One of the greatest moments of my life occurred on the second Sunday of October, when my eldest son Benjamin was born in Quentin Burdick Memorial Indian Health Service Facility in Belcourt, North Dakota. Benjamin and I fought for our lives that evening. I had an adverse reaction to the hospital's medication, which caused my blood pressure to drop dangerously low. When I made my final push, my son came into this world, eerily quiet, and his skin was purple. His cord had wrapped around his neck, and he gasped after each tiny breath he took. He was airlifted to Trinity Hospital in Minot and stayed three days in NICU and later discharged alive and well. Why is my personal anecdote relevant to this larger task at hand? For us to celebrate Columbus Day, a man who enslaved and eradicated millions of Indigenous people, my personal story of the birth of my son is symbolic. Right now, as I stand here, please, before you, please consider my son Benjamin's story. He will start middle school this year. His story is one of many. We are a representation and the true embodiment of generations of resilience. We have persisted and continued to thrive. For many, our survival, our advocacy, and this resolution represent a move, a step forward to rectify the wrongdoings of colonizers of the past. We cannot change history's mistakes and misfortune. This is not an attempt to weaken the history most of us were taught in grade school. This is an opportunity to strengthen histories and accurately portray all perspectives to include narratives of the Indigenous people who are here and are still here, who were here and are still here. Already, I know that our future in Grand Forks is bright and welcoming because we've taken some steps together already. As the North Dakota tribal flags of the Sisseton-Wapitun, Spirit Lake, Staney Rock Three affiliated MHA Nation and Turtle Mountain Nation sit behind you, together, side by side. We have many steps in front of us. I stand here humbly tonight as an Indigenous community member, a graduate student, and most importantly, a mother of three beautiful, intelligent, and receptive multiracial children who are extremely proud of their Anishna Bay and Lao heritage. What history will we write tonight? Grand Forks City Council members, we are asking, this resolution passed as is. Your vote will help us honor the truth. Let's do the right thing in a unanimous vote next Monday, July 15th. Thank you. Yeah, questions? Let people come up first, you say?
I think if we open the follow-up comment, we might speak.
Okay. Perfect. Okay.
Hello, Grand Forks City Council. My name is Niska Kempenek. I'm going into sixth grade at South Middle School. I was born and raised in Grand Forks. I am a member of Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa. I'm asking you today to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. I was inspired by my older sister, Zoel, to advocate for my education. In first grade, I shared with my teachers how celebrating Columbus Day affects me. I gave them information on facts, and they honored my request. This has been helpful to not only myself, but my fellow classmates. Therefore, I think we should replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Bonjour, Grand Forks City Council. I am Hillary Kempenek. I am a resident here in Grand Forks. I live at 1610 Ryder Road. I have been a resident here for half of my life, where I received my education, met my husband, and we are raising our children here now. First of all, I want to say thank you to Councilperson Katie for your acknowledgement. That was very beautiful, and I hope to see that become a thing here at City Council and throughout our community. What I'm going to say is ad lib. As many of you have heard from me through email and social media, I respectfully request that you pass this forward as is, as the amendment or proposal is. First of all, I think it's really important to note that we're not asking for a formal apology or anything, as I have seen stated online and actually had heard on the radio today. We're just simply asking for you to correct the mistruths that have been bestowed upon us throughout our educational system and throughout our communities. I believe Councilperson Katie Doppler had really gave a pretty thorough statement regarding the misfortunes, I suppose, of Christopher Columbus. He was seen throughout the world as a mass murderer. He was a pedophile. He had committed many crimes against humanity, including human trafficking, and these are things I believe that our community do not want to support and say that we allow this, especially in a time where we are seeing a rise in this. So I think something, acknowledging this is a way to move forward and for us to really I'd also like to note that unfortunately, due to the misunderstandings and what we have been raised to believe, have really hurt our communities as a whole, and again, for the Indigenous people. As an Indigenous person, I am often glossed over, and I can say that for most of our Indigenous people that we're kind of glossed over, we're looked at as the same person. This evening, someone said, I already spoke to you about this, when in fact, I know that was the first time I actually had spoken to that person. It shows that I'm not seen as an individual, and I see that time and time again. My younger daughter, Niska, she had presented to you her own experiences, and I'm very proud of her. She came here today because of what she had witnessed and what her sister had experienced in the school system and in our community. My older daughter, Zoel Kempenek, is a sophomore in the high school system, and for a long time, she would recognize these issues regarding Columbus Day and just the mistreatment for her being an interracial child. When she would present these issues, I had told her she needs to really, truly be empowered and feel comfortable in advocating for her own education. Thankfully and luckily, my younger daughter, Niska, was listening to this conversation, and by first grade, she was advocating for her education. It's been a really beautiful experience, but I want this for other children. Not everyone feels empowered to do so, and so they use their own privileges in correcting something that impacts them. And again, it impacts the entire community. I believe that our community is at a crossroads right now as we are becoming more globalized, and it is making its mark here in the area. It's important, while we are integrating into this modernization, that we also recognize, honor, and celebrate the plethora of diversity here in Grand Forks. And one of those ways to do that is to create the Indigenous Peoples' Day. Making this decision to support this is one of several steps that we can step in creating that welcoming environment. As a descendant of people who have once inhabited this land prior to settlers, it's personally important for my family. As a longtime member of this community, I feel that it's important to see this form of community growth as it embraces its history, recognizing Indigenous people that are still here today, making a positive impact in our communities. I can go on more and more, but I'm going to stop here before I start rambling. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. Please feel free to reach out to me via email or by phone. I'd love to visit more with you, but I hope that we expedite this decision. Thank you.
Do we have other people that wish to speak?
Hello, I'm Aaron Kempenek. My lovely wife and daughter did speak too. I am not going to, of course, differ from that, but to add further support of abolishing, not changing, abolishing the Columbus Holiday for the academic peer-reviewed facts, as my wife and my daughter and my sister-in-law did speak there, is deep down as emotional in addition to factual. In addition to that, which is great to me, to those that may not play much weight on that, are the facts that the agreed-upon translation of Columbus's Italian day-by-day journals are agreed on and show that he was a pedophile. He adored, he molested, he was a human trafficker for the children, nine to 11 girls, he would take, his best friend would rape them, and he wrote that to her highness, Queen of Spain, in fact, the journal says that. There's places where, exactly, he says, he took women on shore, along and seized with other women, seven of them, from the islands of Huana or Cuba, and they would take the women, and they'd utilize them and kill them and bring back, and then he was a slave As a member of Grand Forks, I would hope that the city council would support putting a good image in Grand Forks, helping lead the way that we do not support people who are human traffickers or pedophiles or put people in slave or abuse others. I would like to get your support in helping change this, not change it, abolish it, because it's not worth celebrating. And if there's any questions or facts needed, I have right here 220 pages of his journals that put in explicit detail the sick things he did with his people. And it's sickening that we celebrate that. I can't believe I wasn't educated enough to realize that. There's such romanticism about that, which is good, and everyone's be the best they can be, but facts has to come first before romance. Thank you.
Hello, members of City Council. My name is Becca Kruger. I'm a resident of Grand Forks and Ward 4. Thank you for hearing us today. They say that history is written by the victors, and that's exactly why we have a day on our calendar celebrating a man who systematically worked to disenfranchise the Indigenous peoples of this nation. Today, we all stand before you, and we ask that you move this resolution forward. We are not asking you to rewrite history, we are asking you to recognize it.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name's Nikki Berg-Birren. I live at 216 Fenton Avenue. I would be brief, because I think a lot of us in this room share the same sentiments. The proper place for Christopher Columbus is in our classrooms, not on a public pedestal of honor. It is the job, you know, as a historian, I can testify to the importance of studying this man and his legacy, and it is the responsibility of teachers to do just that, to unpack his complexity, to unpack the incredible complexity of the history he symbolizes. It's our job as teachers to help our students come to their own decisions about this, to come to their own critical analysis of this man and that history. But to continue dedicating a day of public celebration to this individual is to honor, well, first of all, it's to erase or ignore, to whitewash, or even celebrate genocide and the colonization of the Indigenous peoples of the Americas, and that's just frankly unacceptable for us to do in the modern age. We know better than that. So I encourage the council to adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day. Doing so certainly will not fix centuries of wrongdoing and atrocities, but it is a start. It will send, as others have said, an important message about Grand Forks being an inclusive place that celebrates diversity, and I think even more importantly, it'll bring much-needed focus to the rich and vibrant cultures of Indigenous peoples in our community. And we are standing on Indigenous land right now. This culture is part of us. That is something that deserves public recognition. That is something that deserves public celebration. So I encourage you to accept the resolution.
Hello, Jackie Hoffert, 727 North 20th Street, here in Grand Forks. I didn't really plan on talking today, but as I was sitting here, I was reminded of when I actually ran for local office, and I sat up there for an open forum next to a man who is known to have connections with the KKK, and that man received 1,000 votes in this city. And what some people may not feel comfortable saying is that we do have an issue with acceptance in Grand Forks. I believe that. I don't believe it's most people, but I believe even a small bit can really ruin how safe and comfortable people feel in this city. And if you don't feel unsafe or uncomfortable, it's because you're not a target of that And so I think what maybe hasn't been said yet today is that this could be a small thing that symbolizes that here in Grand Forks, we do not accept those types of things to happen in our city, and will make people more comfortable and more safe, hopefully, in time. So.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this, to your opinions?
Hi there. My name is Laura Slodhog, and I live at 1766 South 34th Street, Grand Forks, North Dakota. Speaking from the present matter about Indigenous Peoples' Day, I believe in passing this resolution because I believe we should celebrate the present and not the past. We have a day of Columbus Day where it celebrates one man, but I believe in celebrating the present and celebrating the cultures and the people here in this room. I think that is more important than thinking about the past and our history, because as we stand here, as people have mentioned today, we are writing history. So I think it's very important to recognize what we can do here. So I think it's very important to recognize what we can do here today. Um, and also to recognize that, you know, when we talk about indigenous people, we are standing in what was formerly known as Dakota Territory. So I think we should recognize what's important to us as North Dakotans. You know, we call ourselves that, but there's literally a Dakota tribe. Um, and I think we should also recognize the impact that the cultural events have here in Grand Forks, such as the Wachippi Time Out Powell, which brings revenue through tourism and expands our city's cultural impact. So I just ask that you please vote yes on this resolution and recognize Native peoples' impact upon our community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric Birn. I live at 216 Fenton Avenue here in Grand Forks. Uh, and like Dr. Berg-Birn, I am a historian. Uh, you can imagine our poor children, what they have to endure on a daily basis. Um, so, uh, I teach about Columbus every semester, have done so for many decades. Uh, and, you know, Columbus actually made four voyages to the Americas, uh, each more militaristic and certainly from our 21st century perspective, horrific. Um, one of the common arguments one could make is that, well, you know, what we find morally horrific, uh, is different than what they thought, you know, back in, in the 1400s or 1500s. Uh, but there were people at the time who expressed deep reservations and misgivings about what was happening in the Americas. Uh, most famously Bartolome de las Casas, uh, wrote about the destruction of the Indies and again, expressed sentiments that what was transpiring in the Americas was deeply problematic. Uh, the other thing that I would suggest is that, you know, again, Columbus made four voyages to the Americas, none of them did he ever set foot on what became the United States. Uh, so we only have two holidays in America named after specific people, MLK Day and Columbus Day, and I suppose if you want to stretch it, Christmas. Uh, but if we're going to be, if we're going to be, you know, making America great, the least we could do is have holidays named after individuals who actually set foot in the United States or what became the United States. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else want to speak before it goes public?
Good evening. My name is Anne Sandy. I live at 2299 Bethesda Circle, which I'm sure you don't know exactly where it is, but it's down across from Valley 4000. Um, I was born on Columbus Day. Um, and I grew up in Rhode Island. Columbus was very important in Rhode Island. Uh, there were many, many Italians there and they all supported Columbus Day. Um, the, uh, there was a big deal, Columbus Day Road Race. Boys only, of course. But, uh, the, it was very important and it was a big deal. Um, I would like to suggest that, um, since I have been sitting, have sat where you are now sitting, was a member of the council and, um, chairman of the Public Safety Committee back in the day, um, a long time ago. Um, I would like to suggest that in spite of everything, I think it's time to do the job. I strongly urge you to change the name.
My name is Hassan Abdi. Uh, I live at 2807 17 Avenue South. I see some of you sitting in a wrong spot. I don't know, I don't know your faces, but I see some of you sitting somewhere, a spot you're not supposed to sit or I don't know if it's just okay with you guys, but this is my first night. I want to know everybody. If you're sitting in the wrong spot, I never celebrate Columbus Day, but since the city of Grand Forks is working on, uh, making, you know, this town to be welcoming community or welcoming city, I urge everybody to live, you know, Columbus Day along and just make something, whatever you want to call it, First People Day or Indigenous Day, whatever you want to call it, for the indigenous community of this town, you know, we can have, you know, healthy community. You know, I heard a lot of people talking on radio today, so mad and so anger, you started talking about, I don't know, the morning till 6:07. I'm not, I just couldn't stop and couldn't listen about 5:00. So those people that live in this town, some of them maybe is here today. So to make everybody a little bit happy, let's make, uh, you know, new day for the indigenous community in our town and live the Columbus Day alone. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Hi there. My name is Sarah Galworth. We've already gone over the history. In 1937, that's when we had this holiday brought forth and North Dakota became a state in 1889. Another fun fact, it took until 2018 for the first indigenous woman to be elected to our legislature here in North Dakota. You might say that I am a little involved in our community. I moved here in 98 for college at UND and I have seen a climate change in Grand Forks especially. I have seen the fact that there are, there's more inclusivity, there is more activism and there's more freedom to do so. The very fact that we are standing here right now, having this conversation, shows you just exactly how much this means to so many because they saved our lives during those times and they have taught us well in all of the hard times that we've had in North Dakota. To support this would take the children that are in school right now and show them that we are inclusive. There are many times Grand Forks has not seen an inclusive community and I think this is the first step toward it and a wonderful step. This last midterm election, our district and our area went blue in a red state. I think that says also a lot in the fact that we are capable of doing this and we are capable of finding support.
Hello, my name is Happy Wash Davy, which translates to Beautiful My Woman, and my English name is Melina Grey Eyes. Um, I'm 18 years old and I just graduated from Red River High School. And I started off with a little story that someone told me when they were in school, in high school, they were in a class and it was Columbus Day and they were going over the history and they were going on and on about how great he was, but my cousin started bringing up everything he did and like you heard it, all the history. And as soon as he brought that up, he got in trouble and he got sent to the office and he got suspended. So that's kind of messed up, but anyway. Um, and I remember in Spanish class, one year I had to sit there and listen and watch videos about how great he was and how much he did for this country and to know like everything that he has done and just sit there and learn about that, it just wasn't fun. And to know that no one else knows, I have friends that literally have no idea how much Native Americans have like died. They didn't know it was worse than the Holocaust and for them to not know that and this go over the indigenous people is kind of sad. Yeah.
Can I speak without a speaker card? Yep. So I wasn't going to speak. So Kelly Gores, 116 Conklin Avenue, 58203. Um, I wasn't going to speak today, but thanks to councilperson Duckler's amazing history lesson, it turned out I do have something to say because my grandparents were those early 1900s Italian immigrants, um, from, uh, from Italy. So I am an East Coast, my mother is East Coast Italian. Um, we don't need Columbus Day, us Italian immigrants, we don't need Columbus Day to honor us, we don't need it, drop it, affirmatively adopt indigenous peoples before that day. We are much happier being remembered for cannolis and coffee cake and coffee in the evening, um, than we don't need Columbus Day, so.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Otherwise, we're going to turn it back to councilwoman Mac. All right. Are there any other comments?
This is a really, really important issue and I want to thank all of you who came tonight, whether you spoke or spoke with your hearts and we, it takes a lot of courage to be able to do that. It takes a lot of integrity to be able to do that. Um, and your stories are heartbreaking. It is time, it's past time for us to make this change. So I would move that we approve as, um, as recommended, as written.
Um, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Weber?
Thank you, Councilwoman Mock. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight to have a conversation regarding a resolution to abolish Columbus Day and instead replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. I want to be very clear, I support the addition of Indigenous Peoples' Day to the city of Grand Forks. However, when I look at the resolution, I would like to point out some additional items. While I admit that my knowledge of Columbus Day was very poor, I decided to do some research. As we know and other people have said, when Columbus Day was founded in 1937, the federal holiday provided a sense of dignity and self-worth in light of the hostility and discrimination to many Italian immigrants and Italian-Americans. Less than five decades before the holiday was established, 11 Italians were lynched in New Orleans, the biggest mass lynch in U.S. history. The National Italian-American Foundation stated the following, "In lieu of the advent of Indigenous Peoples' Day, the NIAF is not opposed to the establishment of such a holiday. Native Americans like Italian-Americans should have the right to celebrate and educate others about their history and culture. We believe that to repeal Columbus Day as a holiday, which is celebrated by over 20 million Italian-Americans, only to replace it by another holiday celebrated by another ethnic group would be culturally insensitive." As we have said multiple times as a city, we strive to be welcoming to all backgrounds. I would opt that we create an Indigenous Peoples' Day and that we also find a way to celebrate our Italian-American population, possibly even at the same time. I will be voting in favor of this resolution as I'd like the opportunity to discuss it further over the next week or so before the next council meeting. And I'd also like the opportunity to weigh on, weigh in on and ask some questions on the ready of the resolution of Mr. Weber.
Thank you. Are there later discussions? Any questions?
I would like to vote, I guess, on our initial motion that was put forward and then depending on that, I would have a mark.
Okay. Um, do we have audio for Mr. Bean and Mr. Weber? Uh, we don't have audio for Mr. Bean and Mr. Weber. They are working on it though. Um, so I'd like to postpone just a minute so we can get them, so that they can weigh in on the discussion as well. Um, I think we've had a lot of compelling testimony. We've got a lot of people that showed up tonight that came to council chambers to share their thoughts. Um, certainly, I'm, I'm sure this isn't 100% unanimous across the city. I'm sure that there are some folks that do have some differing opinions, but we've heard from a lot of people tonight and we've heard a lot of support for this change. Um, I think we've covered a lot of history and we certainly want to be open to everyone's viewpoints. We want to make sure everyone feels safe to share those viewpoints. Um, in general, however, it does seem like there's quite a showing of support for this item. I think we're still working on the audio. Is there a feeling?
Madam Chair, Mr. Hagis trying to get him on the phone, uh, under a Plan B and then, then we can see if they have any comments and then go to a vote. I think when in doubt, we have four members in front of us too, so when in doubt, I would just move forward with a vote. And I think the other members are planning to be here next Monday for whatever additional discussion that we may need.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Kerry in Britain.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, we've got you on the phone, up to the microphone.
Very good. Thank you.
We think.
Mr. Weber, I, my apologies, my apologies for being absent on this important evening, but, uh, here, here we go. Columbus was not an American. He did not land in the U.S. or even North America. He did not discover what is currently referred to as the Americas. There's no legitimate reason to have a national holiday on his behalf. I value my friends and neighbors more than the inflated mythological memory of Columbus and a holiday that whitewashes crimes against humanity. There's a simple way of thinking about this evening's resolution. We can continue to offend friends and insult neighbors for no good reason. We can hold on to a mistaken, romanticized lie, or we can do the right thing and move toward a more historically accurate, inclusive and socially just community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Do we have Mr. Bean on the phone? Or do we have Mr. Bean?
I, I did speak with Mr. Bean earlier today, if he's not, so all, all three for him. I think he was going to, he was interested in the conversation and hearing folks out and it would give him some time to, to think about it over the week while he's in Bismarck and then would be more than welcome to provide his thoughts on Monday. So that was kind of his thinking of, he was going to listen tonight and then engage on, at the city council meeting.
Thank you. Um, well, I, okay, I think we have a sense of where everyone stands. Um, if we want to vote on it, we know that it comes back on Monday for any further discussion for Mr. Sandy to weigh in and Mr. Bean. So this would be a recommendation. Uh, Mr. Hagis, does Mr. Weber want to vote by phone?
No vote.
Okay. Um, seeing that, I would say all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Weber is an aye?
No promises.
No promises. We got to push up to the microphone, Mr. Weber.
You're on the microphone again, Mr. Weber.
That's true.
And the vote?
What's he in the affirmative?
It's a call for the vote, Mr. Weber.
Aye.
All votes? I think he's still saying, he's still saying. For those members that we have audio on, we are unanimous in moving this forward. It will come to council then, next Monday. Thank you. So. I'm sure everyone's anxious for item 214. This is for property number 874 Main ARPT, located in the middle of the road to Mass Road Station 32. I have Mr. Walker, he is somewhere in the woods.
Good evening.
Good evening. So this project involves replacement of several T fittings on one of the city's main force main that transmits.
Let's just pause for a second. Now, who might you go screen, Mr. Walker?
All right. So this project involves replacement of several Ts that are on one of the city's main force main that transmit sewage from the city out to the wastewater treatment plant. These Ts have, some of the Ts have previously failed requiring repair under emergency situations. So that's the reason that we're replacing them. We received bids for this project last Monday, July 1st. We received a total of three bids and all three were opened. And the lowest bid was from a company, CC Steel, in the amount of $497,500. That low bid was approximately 3% below the engineer's estimate. And this bidder, the low bidder, has previously done work for the city of Grand Forks, but not necessarily this type of work. Our consultant, Webster Foster and Weston, did some research on this bidder and has found that after interviewing other communities where he's done work, that he's likely able to do the work of this project. On that basis, we recommend awarding the contract to low bidder CC Steel in the amount of $497,500.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Any motions? And a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All votes? Motion passed. Item 215, bid for project number 7907, district number 723, paving street lighting for Opportunity Park, the first three subdivision. Mr. Racer?
Thank you. Opportunity Park, this is that area generally described as being west of the interstate, south of 32nd Avenue South. Done a number of projects out there. This is to do the paving and the geometric extent of it is in your packet. It's basically 42nd Street and parts of 36th Avenue South, again on that side. We did open bids. The low bidder is Paris Contracting. They're 6% below the engineer's estimate. And we're recommending award to Paris Contracting, the amount of $1,130,14.21. $131,000, $14.21.
Thank you. Any council discussion? And a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All votes? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 216, amendment number one to engineering services agreement, A E two S, for project number 7436 slash 7437, district number 518, dash 923, sanitary sewer and water main for North 62nd Street and Gateway Drive. I don't know if we have Mr. Weber on the phone. We don't. So I will preface by saying, since this is a preliminary vote, I'll take action and recuse myself, but next Monday, since this is just for further recommendation. Mr. Walker?
So this project includes installing sanitary sewer and water mains in an area that would serve existing developments as well as serve future developments. It's in an area that was previously identified as a strategic infrastructure growth area. This project was actually bid in 2017. And with the exception of some surface restoration, it was recently completed this year. The portion of the project includes installing a very deep sanitary sewer. The sewer was about 28 feet deep. And the area is, has very wet, very soft soils. So we encountered some very poor soils. The new sewer also paralleled two sewer force mains, or I should say two force mains. One was the main wastewater force main that carries sewage out to the wastewater treatment plant. And the other one is a residuals force main that takes waste from the water treatment plant out to a treatment facility. So it was very important that we not disrupt those two force mains. The other thing that we encountered is that there were several businesses out in that area, so we needed to maintain access to those businesses. There was also a number of private utilities. So there was a number of issues out there that made this project very difficult. The intent of the project was to do a kind of a different installation of a sanitary sewer that we don't typically do, but it was such that we had the contractor excavate pits and then push in a steel casing pipe for about a couple hundred feet and then install mantles at those locations and then install a gravity sewer inside of the steel casing pipe. The contractor was able, excuse me, the contractor was able to complete that installation for portion of the project, but when he came to the Highway 2 crossing, he encountered a number of difficulties. The pits that he had dug experienced side slope failures where the sides caved in. A lot of his shoring was damaged, was collapsed. And the biggest problem he had is that the bottom of the excavation actually pushed up with the weight of the soil around it and no excavation above it. So he encountered a number of difficult situations. So there was a point in time where the contractor actually demobilized from the site because he felt he just could not complete the installation the way it had been designed. So we negotiated a change order with this contractor to do it a different way and actually gave him almost an additional year's worth of time to complete the project. The intent of this amendment is to compensate the design engineer for additional effort on the project. One of the things that we had to do is we had to redesign the crossing of Highway 2. Originally, it was intended to be a steel casing pipe that would be pushed underneath the roadway. We changed it so that the contractor would install a smaller diameter polyethylene pipe by directional drilling it at a shallower depth and a steeper slope. So the engineer had to redesign that. We also redesigned some of the upstream sewer because of the decrease in depth. We could install it by open cut as opposed to installing steel casing pipe as originally intended. The most significant amount of effort required by the engineer was the additional inspection time. As I had mentioned before, we added an additional year of time to allow the contractor to complete the project and the engineer was obligated to inspect the project for that duration. There was another issue with a sewer that was installed along 12th Avenue. Originally, it was thought that 12th Avenue existed, but however, we found out that 12th Avenue, their actual right of way, had been previously vacated. So it was required that we obtain an easement for that installation. The other thing we ran into is that because with all of the soil problems that we had out there, the consultant was asked to have his geotechnical subconsultant evaluate some of the soil conditions, do some additional testing, some evaluations, and make some recommendations regarding how to handle the soil out in that area and not repeat some of the problems that we encountered. The last thing that we ended up doing is that we had to work with rural water and the contractor to relocate a section of rural water that was originally thought to be ways away from the sewer installation. However, we found that it was in conflict with the proposed installation. So the consultant ran into a number of difficulties and the purpose of this amendment is to compensate him for that additional time that was not anticipated when the original agreement was approved. On that basis, we recommend approval of amendment number one with A E two S for additional engineering services in the amount of $93,000.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? First motion? And a second? Any additional discussion? All in favor? All votes? Item 217, preliminary engineering reimbursement agreement for project number 848, reconstruction of North Third Street, University Avenue to Demers. Mr. Walker again.
So this project involves reconstruction of that section of street, North Third Street from University Avenue to Demers and would utilize nearly $2.5 million of federal funds through the urban grants program. And normally, federal funds would normally not be allowed for use on preliminary engineering or design engineering. Typically, that's something that the city is obligated to fund themselves with 100% city funding. However, under this new federal program, preliminary design engineering and final design engineering is eligible. However, the DOT requires that the city enter into an agreement that basically says that if the city decides to materially change the scope of the work of the project or cancel the project, we would reimburse them for the monies, the federal monies that have been spent on the project. So we think that that's appropriate. With that, we would recommend approval of the preliminary engineering reimbursement agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other business? Any other announcements? Mr. Phelan?
I just wanted to highlight next, in case you don't have it in calendars, we have a city council meeting as we've emphasized tonight on the 15th, so we'll have the resolution moving forward. You will have pure development. We'll come back with the amended TIF for the additional floor and the additional apartments as we've discussed. It has been approved by both the school board and the county commission, and that will be up in front of you for final resolution. Also wanted to mention, we also will be briefing the first budget meeting. We'll be on the salary and benefit plan will be in front of you. And Tanji Bhavat from H R will brief that. And then we'll discuss the general fund and Marine Storsted will brief that on the 15th. And then on the following Monday, on the 22nd, we'll brief the enterprise funds and some of the other miscellaneous funds. Just so you know, we're getting into budget season. And so Monday will probably be a more lengthy meeting, but we'll give you a good overview and we'll have plenty of time to follow up with any questions on the budget between, you know, the 15th and 22nd when it comes back in August. So just want to give you a heads up that 15th and the 22nd will be more robust meetings.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn? So we'll, and second? Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Oh, I wish I had wings. In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature. Grand Forks. On Saturday, August 17th, feel the thrill of WWE Live with the Universal Champion.
The Age of Rollins is here!
And we are going to burn it down!
See Seth Rollins collide with Baron Corbin for the Universal Championship, plus Braun Strohman battles Bobby Lashley one-on-one. It's WWE Live at Grand Forks on Saturday, August 17th. Tickets are available.